...the whole meeting to order, please. We're here to discuss the possibility of gas tax suspension in Allegheny County. We would not have been having this meeting today if the state hadn't announced last night that they were extending the deadline date to May 16th for the June quarter. Up to that, we were not able to meet the deadline, so we were putting this off until the September quarter. But we are here to discuss this now, and I'd like to begin by sharing what we think is the primary reason for doing it, and then listing some of the reasons that are legitimate for not doing it or postponing it until the September quarter. The primary reason for supporting this option that the state has given us is that there would be a small financial benefit for many, most of the county residents. We recognize that, that any time there's a reduction in costs that we have to pay, that's a benefit. The primary reasons that are on the table for being either opposing this altogether or postponing it for this quarter is primarily the loss of sales tax revenue. That's a big item. We only have two sources of revenue primarily here, and that's sales tax and property tax. We have no way of determining how much, but it is evident that there is some sales tax on gasoline that is, that goes to people that are not county residents by virtue of being on I-86 and the stop-offs in Cuba and at crossroads and other places along the way. So those people are not our residents who would be benefiting. County fuel costs are going up along with inflation. We are being hit with that in a big way, and this gas tax suspension would not be a benefit to the county as an organization at all because we're tax exempt to start with. And in some historical records of similar situations and in publications from other counties, even those who are doing it, there are statements, there's no guarantee that the consumer will ever see the benefit of that, that particular savings. And then we, as a legislature, have the responsibility to do due diligence in anything that we're considering as actions that will affect the residents of Allegheny County. And so it's our responsibility to research the short and long-term effects of a gas tax suspension as it might be here. And one of the problems with this entire process has been a very short window to do this and to generate the information that we'd like to have for making this decision. I would just simply add, then, that in our discussions, whether they've been formally and formally, that we have talked about if we do not do the gas tax suspension, that we look at approximate amount of money that would not be going to local people right now, and then take some of that sales tax money that would be generated and use it to help our county residents in other ways, whether it would be a reduction in property tax come the next budget year, or however it might be done. So those are a few things that I've had on a list here, and I'd be glad to open it up for questions. And if it's possible, if further information is requested in any of these areas, our county administrator, county treasurer, and county attorney are in the back, and the attorney is raising her hand right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before the Board of Legislators starts to discuss this, I just want to go over the procedure of what needs to be done today. So the first item that the Board needs to decide today is whether or not you wish to proceed with a resolution moving forward, if this is something that you wish to entertain. If the answer is yes, based on your discussion, then the second question you need to answer is whether you wish to proceed with the resolution to meet the June deadline, the June 1st deadline, or the September 1st deadline. If it is for the June 1st deadline, then because of the recent amendment to the law by the legislature, which we were notified of last night, the deadline is now May 16th, which means that any resolution that is brought before this board needs to be brought at your full board meeting next week, next Wednesday. So that resolution would need to be ready and be prefiled for next Wednesday's vote. If you choose to, if you answer yes to the question of you want to move forward for a resolution, but you want to wait until September, then we still have time to prepare that resolution up until, to meet the August 1st deadline for the notice. If you decide that you want to do it for June 1st, then the following questions that you would have to answer would be, what would you be looking for, would be $2 or $3, and also for a sunset provision, which date you would want. So there's a series of questions during your discussion that you would need to answer, and that you will need to answer in a somewhat procedural way.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd be glad to open the floor up for any questions or comments from any of the board members.
A question, please. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. As for the county attorney, once we get through some of this discussion, someone can make a motion with parameters that you just described, this dollar amount, this date, start date, this sunset date. And then, once that's on the table and seconded, others can make motions to amend the resolution as necessary to get consensus if we're to find consensus. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just please don't make it too confusing for me. You may have to bear with me if we have a lot of amendments going on, because there may be a lot of motion practice here, and this will be practicing all of our Roberts' Rule skills this afternoon.
Mr. Healy.
Do we need a motion in a second before we hear any comments from the treasurer on this, the financial impact of this matter?
We asked that question to start with, and we're told we did not need the motion.
Okay. I'd like to hear from the county treasurer what the possible impact this could be have on our budget and the budget for next year, and if we're not, is necessary to refer this to the Budget Committee.
Good afternoon. Okay, well, we, after a lot of discussion yesterday, after the memo came out, we kind of got together and I ran some numbers to see what I needed to have ready for you today in case the conversation came up, and it did, and I'm glad I did this. But I looked at, well, basically, I looked at the gas prices at the pump today. At Crosby's, unleaded gas today is $4.29 a gallon, and diesel is $5.99. To simplify the analysis that I was doing, which is really just a rough, rough estimate, I'm sure all of you understand that we really can't get exact numbers about the gas price and where our tax is added to the gas, you know, whether there's a raw tax amount for gasoline costs, or where we're even added in the mix of things. Do we come after the federal, you know, where is it added in there? So this is just really a rough base on the price per gallon this morning. Calculated out, we currently receive about 18 and 1/2 cents per gallon on the current price. If you capped that at $3 a gallon, we would get about 14 cents a gallon, which would be a savings of about 5 cents a gallon to the, at the pump, if that's what you want to say. Whereas, which is not a guaranteed price at the pump, obviously, you know it's all up to the vendor, the store, the gas station, to set that price for the gas. So if it was a $3 cap, it would be about 5 cents a gallon. If it was $2 a cap, it would be about a 9 cents difference in sales tax collected. $4. Diesel, we believe, is included in this reduction. So if it was diesel, we would have to take it off the diesel, and that would be about a 12 cents per gallon at $3, and 17 cents per gallon at $2. We currently get about 26 cents a gallon, a gallon of diesel fuel.
Terry, we have no idea, right, the proportion of gasoline, regular gasoline sales to diesel sales in the county, right? And there's no way to figure that out?
That is correct. I don't have that information about what the mix of sales is between regular gasoline and diesel fuel. So I put together an estimate based on unleaded only. We received from NISAC a report back in March, was when we first started looking at the gas reduction, and from that report, we, I was able to calculate that our average gasoline per quarter sold in Allegheny County is about 4.2 million gallons of gasoline. Based on that number, if we were to do a cap at $3 a gallon, we would see a reduction in sales tax that we would receive of about $211,000. If it was capped at $2 a gallon, our sales tax would be reduced by about $402,000 per quarter.
Per quarter. Excuse me, treasurer.
Yes.
Terry, could you explain again the cap, what we're talking about there, the $3 and $2, in case anyone listening or whatever doesn't understand exactly what that means? Because if it's capped at 3, it doesn't make much difference what the price actually is per gallon, right?
If the gas is capped at 3, that is the maximum amount of sales tax that we can receive per gallon of gas regardless of what the price is above $3. So we would only receive X amount. You know, we'd figure out the 4 and 1/2, 4 and 1/2 percent times the 3 bucks, which is about 14 cents a gallon. So that's how, that's how that's calculated. If you capped at $2, if gas went to $5, we'd still only receive the tax amount on the $2. Right, and $4 is not an option. Correct.
It's a legal option, but not a good option.
Right.
Yeah.
I have a question, just to clarify. When we put together our budget, we were putting it together at $3 a gallon. Is that right, when we did it? As a question.
Actually, we don't look at the individual products that we receive sales tax on. We look at sales tax as a whole. So we don't go through and say, what are we going to receive on gasoline for a year? We look at what we receive on overall sales tax for a year. So the individual products that we receive sales tax on are not taken into consideration.
Okay. I was just trying to feel how it fit into the budget where we're at, because we weren't anticipating this inflation in gasoline at the time.
Mike, Mr. Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little follow-up on that. Now, as I understand it, if we pass something today, there's no guarantee that this will be passed on to the consumer, that that'll be up, any of that nickel a gallon, or whatever it might be, would be passed on to the consumer? It would be up to the distributor or the retail vendor, one of the two?
That is correct. We can't guarantee that that nickel would come off a gallon of gas at $3. We can't, we can't guarantee you would see that at the pump. You have to remember that the gas prices fluctuate daily, so it all depends on when the retailer purchases that allotment of gasoline as to what price. And, you know, it's a competitive market. So, you know, they might get it cheaper, but their competition is selling it 420, so they'd sell it 420. I mean, it really is a very competitive market for gasoline. And the price fluctuates on a daily basis, depending on when they fill their tank. That's what, you know, decides what the price is that they get it for.
And none of this affects the nation at, or on the reservation at their gas stations? Is that correct, or?
Correct.
They don't pay any tax?
Just one, one quick point. I think when we look at the price per gallon and we do the comparison, we're doing taxes included. We do not know what the raw price per gallon is, so it could be 348. So our taxes would be based on 348 per gallon, and then, you know, whether or not the retailer opts to make a profit on that sale of that gas, gallon of gas. That's, that's the really tricky part here, is we don't know what a raw gallon of gas is at this point. So that also, so when we calculate at 429 with taxes included, that's taxes included. That's not, and our, our tax would then be on the actual price per gallon, not necessarily reduce what it is here, so.
Thank you, Deputy County Administrator, Tim Boyd.
And back to your question about the reservation, there is no tax on the reservation, so this doesn't affect the reservation gas price.
Terry, if we do this, we have to choose one of the caps, two or three?
That is correct. That would be one of your options. If you choose to move forward, you have to decide whether you want to cap it on the 3 percent, or the $3 per gallon, or the $2 per gallon. And for how long you want that to be in existence.
Legislature Rick at Swales.
Just a question on the sunset date. Is there a sunset date for the state? Like, do they have one set, and can we set a separate one, or do we go with what they have?
So the state's sunset date is December 31st, 2022. However, the, the new legislation that came down, that was amended last night, stated that you could go into January of 2023, or you could extend it into any, the end of any of the quarters. So if you wanted to go to March 31st, 2023, you could do so as well. Or, or if you only wanted to do, say, for one quarter, so if you wanted to go from June 1st, 2022, and then end it at the end of that quarter, you could do it as well, just to see what the results were.
I got.
Mr. Healy.
So the state legislature passed it with a sunset of the end of December of this year. Is that correct?
I believe it's December. I think it might be the end of the quarter, which is the second one.
So the elections are in November. Is that correct, this year?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You need to remember that the, the law that was passed made this a permanent option. So if you don't set a sunset, it is out there permanently. So that's why people are setting the sunset date, so that then they can control how long it is. But it really is a permanent option if you want to do that, and I believe we've mentioned it before, that Seneca County is one of the only counties that, back in the early 2000s, 2005, when it was, it was an option thrown out to every county before, they're the only ones that stuck with the $2. They capped their gasoline at $2 a gallon. So they have a straight-up 8 cents per gallon for, no matter what the price is.
Another question.
Listen to what, what your numbers that you put together, and I know these are rough numbers. We're looking at $200,000 a quarter if we do this for three quarters. If we do this in June, we're looking at three quarters, if we sunset it, we're looking at 600, possible $600,000 reduction out of our sales tax for this budget year, correct?
Actually, Deb, there's two quarters of sales tax left in 2022. The new, the third quarter would start December 1 and would travel, you know, would extend over into January of 2023. They actually go till February 28th. So for two quarters, if you did it for six months, two quarters would be about $422,000. If you did it for an entire year, it would be about $845,000 if you capped it on $3 a gallon. And that's rough. That is definitely a rough estimate, but.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Ms. Harris.
One of the arguments that we've heard is that it's more appropriate to apply this pause now as in the peak summer fuel cost months, right, instead of waiting until the fall. You have those numbers, Terry, right? I don't have them in front of me. But is there a significant difference in our taxable sales in the third quarter as opposed to the fourth quarter?
This is based on the information from NISAC. I have the, the sales per quarter in 2021, and the sales per gallon is larger, obviously, in the quarter that ends in September. Overall, last year, the average again was like 4.25 million, but in Septembers was like 4.7 million gallons of gasoline. So there is a significant difference in that September 21st quarter.
Million dollars, right? Dollars or gallons?
That's gallons. It's about 500,000 gallons different between quarter ending June of '21 and quarter ending September of '21. There's a difference of about 500 gallons of gasoline sold.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Havy.
I guess I think it's probably be for Terry. Did I mention, did you mention, excuse me, that we could actually do this for one quarter? Would that would mean if we got on this, we could do it for the quarter starting June? Is that correct? And then, and then we could sunset it then? And if so, would we have an option to renew it at that time?
I'm not aware of the option. I think that would be a call for Allison. I apologize for that going off. You can set it for just a quarter. That is, if you take action by the 16th of May. If you take action by the 16th of May, that would start June 1st, and you'd have June, July, and August that you would suspend the gasoline tax. So it would end August 31st.
Okay, I guess my, my question would be, could we reconvene and extend it if we decided we wanted to as a body?
I would argue that we could reconvene and extend it for another quarter.
Thank you.
Are there other questions, comments? Mr. Burdick.
My concern is, you know, the comment about, well, we didn't budget it, but you never know what you're budgeting with sales tax, so you always, you budget low and hope for more. So because we've been lucky to get more, I mean, anybody that's done a budget, you know you budget your revenues low, your expenditures high. Our expenditures have gone up with all of the inflation. Our revenues, if we cut our sales tax, that's our main, one of our main sources of income for the county. I guess I don't understand why we would want to eliminate any sales tax, instead, look at our budget when we do budget, and look at other ways, like Mr. Harris suggested, of reducing maybe the levy, and which would reduce, reduce property taxes. It concerns me that we could possibly lose that. I mean, if we did the $2 reduction, we could lose $800,000 in sales tax. That's a lot of money, and I'm concerned about that.
Other comments? Mr. Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's obviously no secret that I'm for this cap. 800,000 is about 2 and 1/2 days' worth of our budget. Not a big deal in the long scheme of things, just in my opinion. So I'm thinking about the single mom, the trucking companies, the business owners, the retirees. That's kind of where my heart is. We already have a slightly higher sales tax compared to neighboring counties. It's just something we could do now to put the money directly into the people's hands that are driving daily. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Fenton.
Yeah, I would just like to think about where we're at right now. We're, at this point, we know our line items that we have are going to be a lot closer to the final number, what we budgeted because of the inflation that we've gone through. So that puts us at a point of where we usually have a good fund balance to move to the next year. My concern with that is, is that we're probably not going to have that same amount of fund balance to be moved to next year at the end of this year because of the expenses that we're incurring right now, as everyone else is. The other point that I would make is that, as we look at next year's budget, I believe the chance of reducing that per thousand rate is going to be very difficult to do with the inflation that we are going to foresee next year. And so that's my concern there. So the other side of that is, is that, do you give them the tax break now, or think you might be able to do it next year? And I, my concern is that we would be able to do it next year. So I guess I'm leaning in either direction, whatever the Board decides.
Mr. Fenton, for those listening, you know, could you explain to them that they may not understand what the levy is, that you're talking about their property taxes for next year?
The rate per thousand.
Right, the rate per thousand in the tax levy, which might go up if, if, if we did this, is what you're thinking?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ricky.
What jumps out at me, just by seeing the numbers, with a diesel possibly saving five or 12 cents, capping it at 3, on a 250-gallon fill-up, which isn't even filling most trucks, they'd save 30 bucks. So that's, that's significant, I think. And if Stubeen decides not to do it, we don't know, they've talked and they're not, they'll bypass them and stop it quickly, they know they can save 30 bucks, because Oleand has two exits, and neither one of those are very, are very truck-friendly. But we have Cuba and the crossroads, very easy exits, very friendly, get off, you can grab something to eat and fuel up. So that 30 bucks jumps out. I don't know, maybe we'd get a lot of truckers coming in, spend some money. Just a thought.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak on the diesel. I did do a little bit of an analysis on the diesel fuel. If we were at 75% unleaded and 25% diesel sales, which of course, we do not know that, the diesel sales will make a significant increase in the amount of money that we lose per month. And it, just for the quarter, would add about another 70, $75,000 of a decrease in our sales tax at 25% of diesel use. I do believe that that number is probably higher than that, but I do not have accurate information to be, to determine that. So the more that you rely on diesel fuels, fuel sales, the more you're going to lose in the sales tax that we receive. So you need to keep that in mind, even though that's a good thought, John, you just need to know the other side of that as well. You're welcome.
Mr. Root.
I think this is not an easy decision, and I appreciate Mr. Seer's comments. And I understand everyone is under a budget, every home is under a budget, and so are we as a county. We have a budget that we put together. We are getting hit with inflation that we did not count on at the beginning of the year when we put together our budget. I believe that we need to really think this over, know what we're doing, and not rush into something. We need to be physical, physically responsible for our residents, and is this a good thing? It's a feel-good thing? It may be a good thing? We don't know if it will be. But I think we need to look long-term. We have a budget also. We have costs here at the county also. We have mandates that are going up. We're losing state aid every year to cover these mandates. So we are hurting just as much as individual people are, and our job here is to put together a budget and keep us physically, fiscally responsible so we can pay our bills now and into the future. So I think we need to look long-term for us here. I understand the pain. We all are getting that pain at the pump, but we need to be able to pay our bills here. But we need to be able to pay our bills here at the county.
Mr. Chairman, can I request a five-minute recess, please?
Yes, sir.
Never mind.
Are there other comments?
I, I guess I've, I've got, I've got one for both, I've got one comment for each side of the argument. Take this for what it is. I called the only person I know that ever owned a gas station today and asked him, I said, if you got a break in sales tax, if, and it came on the distribution side, would you pass that on to the consumer? He said, no, I wouldn't. Nobody's going to do that. Okay, so that's just one anecdotal record for the, for the board. But I, I want to touch on something that legislator Ricky mentioned before too, which is true. It's not as simple as giving this money back in the levy.